All right, I have 6:32. I am calling the Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting to Order. Thank everyone who is here in attendance. I'd like you all to rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, Sean, you have the proposed agenda in front of you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Sean. I will make a motion to approve the agenda as published.
All right. Motion made. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously. All right, next item is the approval of the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting held on January 11th. You could have gotten the minutes in your package. And I have a motion to approve.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve the January 11th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Kate. Any discussion?
Uh, this is Kate. I did have one super minor change. Under Selectmen's update, uh, the third one down, all nursing homes received their first, um, doses of the vaccine instead of does. And that was all I had.
Okay. Sean, anything?
Nothing.
All right. I didn't have anything. Can I have a vote to approve the amendment, the amended, excuse me, amended minutes from the January 11th, 2021 meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Any comments from the public before we go on? Going once, going twice. All right, move on to the next item, the Selectmen's update. I will start with my notes. Uh, project-related update for you on the Rossi property, what's happening there. As you recall, we signed a purchase and sale agreement uh, in order to conduct due diligence. The first part of that was a Phase One environmental assessment. We hired Ty &amp; Bond, a well-known environmental firm, who actually are the ones also working on Scoville Hall for us, to conduct that. They completed their report. They found 20 areas of concern. We shared that report with Rossi Company. On this past Friday, the 8th, Bill Warner, Amy Baylon Court, who is our rep at Ty &amp; Bond, uh, and I met with Andy Becker, who most of you know as the lawyer for Rossi Corporation, GeoQuest, who is the environmental consulting firm, license provider that the Rossi's have used previously, uh, and an environmental lawyer to discuss the results of the, uh, Phase One. Now, keep in mind, Phase One is, I don't want to say a cursory look, but it's not an in-depth look at the property. It's, it goes to, it looks for problems. It doesn't quantify those problems when it finds it. That's, the next step in this process would be a Phase Two examination. That's where they do quantify the areas of concern to see if indeed they're a concern, and if so, how big, and what would it take to remediate them. Uh, as I said, we met with the Rossi Company to discuss this. Their proposal, which Bill and I can think is worthwhile, and I agree to, is Rossi will have GeoQuest perform the Phase Two assessment. Ty &amp; Bond, our consultant, will be able to observe whenever they choose, and also check the scope of work before it's done, as well as the, do a initial review of the Phase Two report when it's completed. When that report is completed, we'll reconvene this group again, go over the Phase Two report, see what, if any remediation action is recommended, uh, and then decide further steps from there. As part of this, I expect the town will receive shortly an extension to our purchase and sale agreement, because that expires, I believe, this week, if I'm not mistaken, uh, to give us three months to conduct and review the Phase Two assessment. So basically, we're still moving forward to examine the property. There's no additional commitments on either side. We still have a purchase and sale that's valid going forward. Other things to talk to you about, financial budgets. Special meeting last week, the Board of Selectmen approved 19 department budgets. 18 remain department or agency budgets to be, to be approved. This was a matter of interest. Five of those 18 are all contained within public works, so it's not quite as large as it seems to be. Tax collections. To date, about 94 and a half percent of the taxes have been collected that were due. It's actually tracking a little bit higher right now than last year, but basically we're staying along the same trend we've seen for the last three years with tax collection, so fortunately, it doesn't seem that pandemic has had a major impact on our tax collections for this year. Last thing in the financial, I wanted to mention to you, we have the results of our, uh, 10-year property reappraisal. The grand list went up slightly, yeah, about roughly 1 and a half percent. Uh, it went up from, uh, 958.5 million last year to 960.2 million. So decreases in real estate, increase in personal property, which is business tax-related, and increase in motor vehicles. Basically, it was a wash. Public health. Scott or Sherry will give us a more detailed update later in the agenda. I'll just talk about the COVID cases in town. In January, we had a total of 67, which is the highest month to date. December had 64. So far, in February, we had seven. Actually, that looks like a good trend for us when the last Board of Selectmen report, which granted was on the 11th of January, but at that report, we had 31 cases by that time already in January. So you can see that our case rate is dropping off. We have a total right now of 258 cases to date. Test positivity, hospitalizations, new cases throughout Connecticut are trending down. I'm sure you're aware of that if you're watching the news. Uh, but also, there is concern over the new variants, and you've heard it, the race to vaccinate before the new variants dominate. With that, I'll let, when we get to it, Scott and Sherry to take it from there, and then have some potential closing comments after that. Last thing, I, last two things I have on my list. Hadam Elementary last Monday, I woke up, was awakened at 5:15. A call from Sam Baber, the Hadam Fire Chief, saying they were sitting there, alarm had gone off. They were waiting for a key holder, but when they walked around the building, there was water coming out of the entrance by the gym, the lower entrance by the gym. Fortunately, or as fortunate as it can be, the water was a break in the heating pipe. It's a hot water pipe. Hot water, uh, heat in that area. The break was right by the door in the stairwell. Some damage, a carpet's gonna have to be replaced. Obviously, the pipe had to be replaced, and the plumber found a couple other places that we ought to repair, which were. Um, overall, it was a fairly minor incident, all things considered. Last thing I want to mention, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, uh, we turned down a peddler's request from Trinity Solar to go door-to-door to sell, uh, solar products. Since that time, I have received, town has received a letter from the company's lawyer. They're alleging that we are interfering with their ability to conduct their business, which the governor has deemed solar businesses essential, and therefore, we have no authority to deny the permit. I forward that to our town lawyer with my comments that we didn't, we haven't prohibited them from conducting business in town. We're just restricting how they can do it. And if they would like to conduct business in town, I'm sure I can find plenty of storefronts they can rent and set up shop. Uh, our lawyer tended to agree with my wise remark. He'll look at it, put it in more scholarly terms, and we'll get back to their lawyer and see where it goes from there. With that, that's all I have. Kate, Sean, do you have anything that you would like to add to the update?
This is Kate. Um, I will chime in quickly that, um, even though we are shoveling out from under however many inches of snow, and it just seems to keep on coming, we are planning for the, the farmer's market for this summer. We have a tentative kickoff date of June 4th, uh, starting earlier this year. Um, planning on running all the way through mid-October, um, with a break in the late summer. Uh, we're expecting to take a few weeks off, uh, right around when school starts, so end of August, uh, beginning of September, so um, believe it or not, we're actually already a little behind on planning, so if anyone wants to volunteer to help behind the scenes, um, help when the market hits, um, you know, depending on how the pandemic is going, we will always make sure we are following all of the, um, orders and regulations related to public health, um, because safety is obviously always our number one concern. Um, but warmer days ahead, and we can continue dreaming of them.
Thank you, Kate. Sean, anything?
Um, just, uh, if you could pass along to Public Works, the past two storms, we got quite a bit of snow, and the job they've done is, uh, has been very good, very, I'm very pleased.
Yeah, they, they have done a bang-up job, I think, on both of these storms. We delayed the opening both, after both storms of the town office building just to give them a break before they had to come up and clear them around the building. And I think I will make that a normal practice if they've been out plowing that. I don't want them to push it and somebody to get injured, being out there a little too long. So thank you for that, Sean. All right, with that, Board of Ed update. Jen, you're on.
Thank you, Bob. Jen Pavolora, Board of Ed. Uh, we met a couple times. We had two meetings in January, and Superintendent Hagman reported that the CIAC in alignment with the Department of Health would allow low and moderate-risk winter sports for the high school to compete, starting in January. The boys and girls basketball teams, boys' swimming, gymnastics, ice hockey, and indoor track would have shortened seasons with no state tournaments, but they would be allowed to play. Masks would be required to be worn during practices and games by both players, coaches, and referees, but there would be no spectators allowed at practices or games. Wrestling and competitive cheerleading were both considered high-risk and will not be allowed to participate in competitions. However, our cheerleading team will be able to do sideline cheerleading. I also want to add that HKTV, um, is going to be able to broadcast the home games for our team so that parents and fans can watch. We are very lucky to have them, because most schools do not have a system where they will be able to watch, um, as sophisticated as ours. Update to the high school, the Facilities Committee reported that the fieldhouse renovations were completed in late December with a few punch-list items remaining. The updated space has been opened back up for the high school to use for classes and mask breaks, as well as the winter sports. The fieldhouse closure was a main obstacle in opening the high school for full learning, full in-person learning this fall. However, with the community spread of COVID-19 still high, and the fact that high school students cannot be co-horted because of their variety in their schedules, the administration has decided to continue to teach high school students in the hybrid model for the time being. A schedule went out for the remainder of the year, sent to the families, and if the opportunity arises to safely allow high school students to learn altogether, the administration will report that to the families. Superintendent Hagman also reported that the first four months of school have been challenging, both for teaching and learning. The flexibility in our district to teach in-person and remote students simultaneously has demanded adjustments in the use of technology and available resources. Dr. Hagman proposed supporting the staff's efforts by adding six early release days to this year's school calendar so that teachers and paraprofessionals would have needed time to plan and collaborate to best serve student learning. The board accepted this proposal to revise the 2021 school calendar, and that calendar, as well as the 2122 calendar, has been put on the rsd17.org website. The Personnel and Evaluation Subcommittee reported that the board, um, reported to the board that terms were negotiated for the HKEA into a three-year contract. The cumulative cost in all salaries over those three years, the three-year contract, will be an increase of 8.36%. This increase of $1.2 million is about $100,000 more than the last three-year contract we signed, and it includes a two-and-a-half-step movement for the teachers. Insurance cost share will increase by 2% over the three-year period. Other substantive changes included clarifying sick leave policy and increasing teacher prep time for the K through three elementary school teachers. The contract has been filed with the town clerks today at Hadam and Killingworth, and by state statute, the terms of the contract are considered binding unless the legislative body of either town rejects the contract by formal process within 30 days. And, uh, lastly, just want to add that Superintendent Hagman's COVID communications can be viewed by all the community. If you go to the RSD17 website, there's a list under our district of resources and communications. It includes, um, a database of, uh, COVID reportings and all the communications she's been sending out for this entire year, very, very long year. And that is it. Thank you, Bob. Happy to answer any questions if anybody has any, too.
Yeah, thanks, Jen. I'll put one to you. We got an email from Park and Rec. Can you tell us what was discussed about the former central office residence building, the white building on the grounds of the middle school, old middle school?
Absolutely, Bob. We, um, that was this last meeting here in February. The Facilities Committee reported to us that the white building, um, it has been a concern for many years. Uh, it's where Park and Rec and Youth and Family Services are housed. It has certain deteriorations going on. It's an old house that I know, I actually got to see some documents from 50 years ago. It came, it was purchased for the district when we combined our towns into the RSD17. Um, so I don't know specifically how old it is, but there are different things, including there's concerns about the roof. So what Facilities, um, recommended to the board, and the board agreed, was to start a conversation with both of those agencies to let them know that we have concerns about this building. Um, we're not, and we want to talk to you about it beforehand, instead of suddenly, uh, pipe bursts, or the roof collapses, or, you know, when you have all your stuff in there, when you have, um, the basement, I think, is filled with, with things for the Youth and Family Services, run amok, and all that sort of stuff. So we asked Superintendent Hagman to begin a conversation with both of those agencies to let them know that we would like them, um, to start considering the fact that there might be, uh, they might need to find another place. And that does not exclude somewhere in our school system, but it also includes talking to both towns to see what is available.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. All right, Ian Ralph, have questions for Jen?
Yeah, Bob, this is, this is Dave Challenger.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, thanks. Um, Jen, do you know if these, the, the student ratio split between us and Killingworth, how that changed this year as we prepare for the budget? Are we gonna have a greater percentage or reduced?
It is minorly reduced. I don't know specifically off the top of my head. Um, it is, we did, you remember last year, we did have a jump up. Hadam took a greater percentage. We are back down. It does, I, I don't think it's, I think we went up a full percent last year. We're not an entire full percent back down.
Okay.
But I, we will have that.
About a million last year, so maybe it'll save us half a million or so this year.
I don't know the answer to that. I know that, I believe that it was sent to the Boards of Finance, but if not, we will have it for you for the joint meetings.
Great. Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, Dave, it was a decrease for us of 0.83%, if I'm remembering right off the top of my head.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bob.
Kate, you had something?
I did, and yes, this is Kate, and that was a nice segue. Um, so I know we have the joint meeting coming up in early March, and I think it's a little bit later this year than it was last year. Um, so can we expect basically the same process um, as last year's meeting, where Dr. Hagman presents the budget, and then we'll have the report that shows like your expenditures to date versus what's budgeted?
Yes. Say that again for me, Kate. I'm sorry. I was trying to remember, because we remember we had one in January last year that we didn't do this year. You, sorry, Sean's laughing at me. Um, we will be, she will have for us on March 2nd, the, her full budget presentation. She's gonna do it to the Board of Ed, and um, all of her administrators will be there. I do believe we meet with you guys within a week of that. So it's really around the same time as last year. Um, and it will be pretty much the exact same information. Last year was funny, because we actually had three meetings with the joint boards, um, all together throughout the year, because we kept checking in, because the vote was taken away, the referendum opportunity was taken away from the town, so we kept talking with the Boards of Finance. The, what you will be seeing at your first meeting will be, um, just like what you had at that second meeting, which should have been around Mar, in March last year.
Okay.
I don't think I answered your question, though.
No, you did. Nope, you totally did, and that's your right. Last year's process was a little convoluted, I think, so it's, this year seems a little more streamlined, um, and just, and a thank you to the, um, the administration, administrative person who sent out that calendar invite for our March meeting so early. That's very helpful to know that far in advance. It's nice to be able to put it on the calendar, so thank them for that. You got it.
All right. Thank you, Jen. Good report.
Thank you.
Uh, next, next item is the Health District update. Scott, I'll turn it over to you.
You can hear me?
I can hear you, Scott.
Right. Yeah, everything you said was spot-on, uh, so far with COVID, Bob. The, uh, numbers have drastically decreased. It looks like we had 38 total cases in the district this week. Um, weeks prior, we were running about 75. A couple weeks prior to that, over 150, so we've seen a sharp decline, uh, like the rest of the state, so that's good. Uh, also, there has not been any, uh, long-term care facility or residential deaths in the district in about two weeks, so that's fantastic news. Uh, we've really pushed on to vaccinations now. Uh, thank God, cases are down, because vaccinations are certainly gonna be a, uh, a full-time job for, for many months, if not years to come, but we're doing a lot of vaccinations at our Crad Clinic in Saybrook. Uh, we administered 3,362 first doses, uh, 685 second doses, uh, for a total of 4,047 vaccinations. We have about 1,900 slots filled up over the next few weeks. Uh, we had about 900 openings this morning until they opened up 65-plus. Uh, every slot has filled, uh, for the next three weeks, so we're hoping we get more allocation to increase some slots, but the good news is, we have full clinics, so we're ready to rock and roll, uh, if and when the floodgates open up. Uh, we haven't heard much about any other vaccines being available to us yet, unfortunately. Uh, there's discussions with Johnson &amp; Johnson, but, uh, that's pretty much all it is, so I think the state's allocated to get about 60,000 doses for the next few weeks. Uh, there's about 500,065 and plus people in Connecticut. Uh, you can do the math, you know, you're still looking at eight, nine weeks potentially to get that group done. Uh, I believe, once that group's done, they should be moving on to the rest of 1B, uh, which would include the educators, uh, and other frontline workers, so a lot more to come. Uh, the teachers, uh, we plan to vaccinate in, in third-party clinics by, uh, school system. We can quickly do that, once we get the doses available in the green light. Uh, we have about 1,600 educators throughout the eight towns. We have to vaccinate, so we're thinking we can get them done, probably about five to six days, uh, when that pin's pulled, so certainly, we're looking forward to that. Uh, what else we up to? Sherry, you want any comments on the vaccination front? And let me just say, uh, you know, this is all done outside on weekends. We, we pulled the clinic off at, uh, when it was 15 below on a Saturday. Uh, we've really, you know, figured it out down there. If you haven't come through, it's a pretty neat operation. Uh, even if you haven't gotten a shot yet, if you ever want to check it out, feel free to do so. Um, but just know, uh, we're moving at the speed the vaccine, uh, allows for based on allocation. The projected allocations for Crad are only 300 doses a week, uh, going forward for the next three weeks. Uh, fortunately, because of our output, uh, the state seems to be sending me more than that allocation. Uh, so this week, I'm requesting 1,000 of the 60,000 doses, and, uh, hopefully, at least I get 500. So, um, we also have to remember that every first dose that we administer, it's getting to that time with the second dose. So if we start doing about 1,000 a week, there'll be, uh, uh, certainly times, we're gonna have to double that number to 2,000 a week, so um, we're excited, but we have to temper our expectations, but, uh, we're certainly looking good here. Lot of Hadam people signed up in our clinics. We did a lot of Hadam, 75 and up. There's a lot of Hadam, 65 and up that got in. Uh, our clinics are open statewide, uh, which is what the governor wants. We don't tailor to our membership, but certainly, we have the benefit of me notifying the towns, uh, when I'm gonna be opening up slots. So a vast majority of our clinics do fill with our eight towns that I'm covering, uh, but also, we're certainly helping out, uh, taking, uh, filling some of the gaps. We're seeing a lot from New London, a lot from the East Haven area, and, uh, a bunch of people from Middletown as well, so. All good here, but the real rock star of the vaccination, Sherry. She can just touch base without us going under. Thanks.
Well, um, all I can say is we have a great team. Um, they're hard at work. What's great to see is that they're all from all of our communities. I have school nurses that are from, um, Hadam, as well as from all of our surrounding towns that rotate in. So, um, it's a true community effort, um, and they're vested in the success of it. And when we can do 375 vaccines in four hours, you know we're moving, so, um, they're a great team, and, uh, please encourage anybody that, um, hasn't been able to, who's 75, if you know anybody, try to help them out, as I know you already have been. Um, they're definitely, it's been a cumbersome system for them, but we'll do everything we can to get them taken care of.
Yeah, it looks like our, um, you know, area, of course, um, you know, benefits from our speed and such, but, you know, we're definitely equity-driven, but just know that uh, Hadam and Essex and Saybrook and Chester and Westbrook and so on are much higher in the, uh, vaccination rates than the rest of the state, which creates, of course, a good-bad situation, so I completely understand the, uh, idea of being equitable, but also, in the same premise, uh, we have to vaccinate as many people as we can, as fast as we can, so the, the gaps we're finding, uh, have, uh, really dissipated, and, uh, just want to echo what Sherry said. You know, some of you guys are doing a great job, because these 75s and ups really found our clinics. Um, but I do urge you, as we go to the next group, 65 and such, there still may be a need for, uh, assistance. Um, it's gonna get a lot easier for people to register in the future. Um, there's gonna be a point in time where they're not gonna necessarily need phone and emails, and they could just, you know, we could do this easier for them. But in the interim, if you know any seniors, 75 and up, that are still, you know, looking for a shot, just have them contact Sherry. We're at that point where we could just take care of them, uh, even if we had to in the office, so, uh, good job to everyone. Thank you.
And I, and I just had one thing, you know, um, the, uh, when people who aren't in the eligibility category show up, it makes it very difficult for us as vaccinators. We wanna, we wanna get shots into arms, but we also have, um, guidance and scrutiny and, um, people that are monitoring what we're doing, so we're really sticking with what, uh, we're, um, advised to do, so, um, it's not that we don't want to vaccinate everybody. We have to go by the groups that are, um, the phases that are up, so thank you for their understanding.
Yeah, and it's not easy, just to, to preface that. A lot of teachers and stuff, they, they get confusing information and dams, but at this point, I think most educators know they gotta wait. Um, you know, sadly, we're kicking out more and more educators every week, uh, certainly ones that know better, and, and Uh certainly ones that know better. And and there are a bunch in our region here and and all throughout the regions that I cover. Um but they're gonna be asked to remove, you know, and it's kind of embarrassing for them that to go through the whole lie. And then uh be removed at the end. So anything you can do to reach out to teachers, their time's coming. Uh they shouldn't be registering and re-registering for appointments and VAMS. Um some do get through, it's inevitable, but we don't want to kind of play that game. Uh they watch, the governor watches, so we want to, we want to be in line with what we're supposed to be doing. But uh I think that's pretty much it. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Thanks, Sherry. Appreciate everything you'll do, and I will endorse the efforts that they're making.
I had, I said, I had one question, Bob.
Yeah, Sean, go ahead.
Just wondering, um on second vaccines, are you seeing any issues with people trying to schedule for their second vaccines? Um you know, now that that timing's coming up. You know, we're gonna, it seems, as you said, it seems like we're gonna have to double our efforts. But have you seen people that have been due not being able to get it?
In our area? No. Statewide, yes. And the reason is.
No, well.
I I keep that under our control. So just to give you a quick example, I open up clinics twenty-eight days after people get their first doses. So uh for example, a clinic I had set up in the uh third week in February. Filled up in seconds with people that got their first doses twenty-eight day priors at one of our clinics. I can also adjust the doses for each clinic, knowing second dose are coming by percentage. So if I put a hundred slots up, I can control how many of those would go to second-dose recipients and VAMS or first dose. So it's finally to a point where I can control better. Um but a lot of people also get their second doses outside of CRAD. Maybe they worked at a hospital and now they're getting it. So it it is a little disjointed. Um but the goal is to have a second dose available to anyone that went through VAMS, regardless of where they get it. But also to respect the fact that people will look for your place for a second dose. So that's what we try to do.
Uh yeah, um that was one of my other questions. Can you, is it possible to set up just second-dose clinics? Or do you have to allow for both?
I can do, I can do whatever I want. Second dose, first dose, or a split.
I know, because I've gotten a bunch of questions from from people, what happens if they can't get it? What's, what's the time? You've, you've seen stuff, some like, oh, you have three or four days, one way or the other. Or three or four weeks, one of the, one way or the other. You know, so you've seen information.
Yeah, the the latest update that was done on January twenty-first by the CDC. Um says the optimal time is four weeks to six weeks after you receive your first. But that's not a be-all, end-all. You know, what people need to understand is the majority of the, of their immunization or, I'm sorry. Immunity that they get from that vaccine comes from the first dose. Um it's the recognition of and creation of antibodies. That second shot is really more of a booster for the B and the T cells to say, hey, energize yourself and have longevity with this immunity. So it's, it's a reintroduction. It's um, it's just like the shingle shot. It's a reintroduction so that the longevity of that memory of those antibodies uh work for a longer time. So it's not, there's nothing bad. You're not gonna start repeating the first dose over if you miss that. Yes, we want you to get it as soon as possible, um but people need to take a deep breath. You know, we had chosen um to wait and put up those clinics as we have the vaccine. So when you set up an appointment in our clinic, you know that you're gonna have the vaccine. I can't tell you how many clinics last week had to cancel their second-dose uh clinics because they never had the vaccine. So we sent out a piece of paper that explains all that. Um as people get their first shot and just say, take a deep breath, in about two weeks, go on VAMS and start searching for something after the date. That was on the back of your card.
All right, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bob, if I can jump in, not a question, just a comment. Um I know Nutmeg Pharmacy here in town um had their own clinic for seventy-five and plus. Um I think within the last week or two, um and all the comments I've heard have been outstanding. Uh it was very well-run, um which of course seems to be the standard operating process for our Nutmeg Pharmacy. Um we are very lucky to have them in our community. So thank you, Greg, and the Nutmeg staff um for stepping up and helping out like they always do.
That's good you mentioned that. I just wanted, I was gonna bring that up as well, that those little partners are gonna be huge going forward. There's a broad segment of population, specifically in towns like Hattam, Deep River and Chester. Where a lot of the elderly or just people in general like to go to their local pharmacist. So I think that's great. And they are doing a good job uh working with your people in Hattam and stuff, as we met uh last week and talked about it. So I hope they keep it up, Bob, with uh getting vaccine, because they could be a player going forward. So good.
Yeah, I'm sure they will. As a matter of fact, today, we scheduled my father-in-law, who's eighty-eight, to get his first dose this Thursday with Nutmeg. And I don't know what the date is, but he's already scheduled for his follow-up, so.
Super.
Yeah, they are doing a great job uh and working well with Jess and Social Services.
Yeah, she's doing super great.
Uh the only thing I'd like to add, you could probably infer it from Scott and Sherry's comments. Uh but tomorrow, the governor's gonna announce that officially sixty-five and over opens up in uh on this Thursday. For vaccinations, I can already be scheduled if they're doing that, that's fine. Uh but we are, they are moving through phase. One A people are for the most part done. There's, I'm sure, still straggles for second doses. Uh nursing home, same thing. But by and large, that is all done. Uh seventy-five and over, we're on the the wrap-up, and so it's continuing on from there. All right, next item on our agenda, tax refunds. Sean, Kate, I'm sure you've got the document from uh Kristen, our tax collector. We've got a request for, let's see, one real estate tax rebate of twenty-four dollars and change. Three motor vehicles. The total of all four requests is six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and four cents. I have a motion to approve the tax refunds as requested by the tax collector.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve the February uh tax refunds as requested.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, next item, appointments, Board of Finance. Our last meeting, we accepted reluctantly the election of the resignation of Harlan Frederickson, Board of Finance. Uh he was a Republican member, the Republican Sam Crum, the Chair of the Republican Town Committee, has emailed us. What they proposed doing is Audrey Brooks, who is currently an alternate to the board. They wanted her to move up to fill Harland's vacant full-time seat, full-member seat. And they are nominating Mark Lundgren, who I've noticed is on with us tonight. To move, I, what, it's back into an alternate seat for you, isn't it, Mark? You were the alternate member before, when I was on, if I remember.
I fondly remember serving with you and Sean. And um and and Dave Challenger, so uh looking forward to it.
All right, can I have a motion to appoint Audrey Brooks at, to fill the vacancy? On the Board of Finance?
I'll make a motion that we uh appoint Audrey Brooks to uh fill the vacancy on Board of Finance.
All right, thank you, Sean. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries unanimously. And now can I have another motion to appoint Mark Lundgren to fill the seat that it's just been vacated by Audrey Brooks? As an alternate.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to appoint um Mark Lundgren to the now vacant um alternate seat.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I guess so, aye.
Okay, once again, carries unanimously. Move on to our last item. Only item of new business. I'm just gonna introduce it and table discussion until the appropriate attorneys can be here, which will be hopefully at our March Board meeting. But back in nineteen thirty-one, the Board of Selectmen, honestly, it's neat looking at the copy of the minutes from that. Um handwritten, I think they had about three years' worth of minutes on one page. But uh basically, the Board of Selectmen voted to approve, and the town meeting approved, the abandonment of a section of Pine Brook Road in Hattam Neck. Pine Brook Road, it's difficult to describe. Basically, the road comes off of one fifty-one, goes for about a half mile. You reach what appears to be just a sharp right-hand turn with a left-hand turn into a driveway. Well, that left-hand turn, the driveway, used to be a road that went all the way through to Salmon River Road. Which is no longer a town road either. Um at the nineteen thirty-one meeting, they, the town abandoned it from Chapman Hill, Pine Brook, from Chapman Hill to where it intersected with Salmon River. There is in the ensuing. What, ninety years, some confusion is to develop as to which hill is exactly Chapman Hill. There's a couple of different answers. Uh so the property, the person who's buying property on both sides of. What was Pine Brook Road would like to combine all that property. They've gone to their lawyer to confirm that the town abandoned the whole area from, again, where that right, quick, sharp right turn is. The Salmon River. Um and I will have a resolution to bring to the Board. Had one for tonight, you should have gotten it in your package. But again, the attorney, who is at hardship vacationing in Aruba right now, doesn't have a good enough Wi-Fi connection. Plus, I suggested he and our town attorney talk a little bit more about whether this really needs a town meeting to approve beyond just our resolution. So that's where that sits. It will come up again uh with your permission at next, next month's Board meeting.
More important question, where do I sign up for such hardship?
Yeah, well, he emailed me today, said he was in Aruba. I emailed him back, said, well, I hope the heck when you get back here, at least your driveway is completely snowed in. So since we have no other items on the agenda, can I call for a motion to adjourn?
Oh, you do have that last uh public comment. That is on the agenda.
You have one there?
Yeah, item twelve, public comment.
May I?
Okay, certainly. I know, I apologize. Um the agenda I'm looking at does not list that at all. Go ahead, Mark.
This is Mark Lundgren. I want to thank you, Bob, Kate, and, oh yeah, you too, Sean. For putting me back on the Board of Finance as an alternate. And always good to see Jen. Thank you.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad you wanted, decided to come back on, uh Mark. It's, it's good to have the institutional knowledge um that you have on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other comment? All right, once again, call for a motion to adjourn?
This is Sean. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, once again, unanimous, the motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
I have a good night.
Good night, everyone.